This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, June 10th, 2019, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file?
Yes, there were just a couple of items in the table file, including some additional personnel items, and then also you'll see an updated presentation from old architects and engineers for their presentation this evening about the Sibley addition and renovation and the new Greenville Park Elementary School.
Excellent.
There's also the copy of the enrollment report, I should point out, in the table file as well.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? By Amy, is there a second? Second by Tom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, we have several here today, and first of all, the last day of school was on Friday, and we had a great day of school. I got to visit every building that day, and a lot of fun being had, you know, in terms of students with really excitement for the summer coming, but also buildings that really just did a great job of making the last day a good combination of fun and learning. So again, thanks to all for just an excellent 2018-19 school year, a quirky one, you know, to be sure, but again, just an excellent school year. We have several student activities announcements that are very exciting, and first and foremost, we want to congratulate the Raider softball team. Their first time to state, they won the championship. So our Raider softball team are your Class 3A champions. They won eight to three over Mankato West on Friday afternoon. So just so people, this is the fourth year in a row that a Big Nine school has won the Class 3A championship, and so it just goes to the quality of softball in those, in our Big Nine districts. We also want to congratulate the following track athletes, and again, something very special that does not happen all that often. Recent Northfield High School graduate Elizabeth Atchison won the state championship in the 800-meter race. The 800-meter race is two laps around the track, and is basically a sprint the whole time. So I get tired just thinking about running a quarter of the way around one part of the track. So congratulations to Elizabeth. And then Elizabeth and her twin sister Grace, Clara Lippert and Ella Pomquist, also placed sixth overall in the four-by-four-hundred relay. Emma Rotler placed seventh in Discus in sixth place in the shot put, again, you know, getting to the podium in both of those events. And Emma Hodapp, third place in the 100 meters. The team placed sixth or eighth overall in Double-A. So that's pretty darn good. So our girls' track athletes had an excellent weekend at Hamlin, and again, congratulations to all of those track athletes. And then finally, it's, we're not done, because we have Molly Stevens, Nate Stevens, and Sylvia Koenig, who will all golf in the state tournament on June 11th and 12th. And so again, our Raider athletes have had a great spring and have brought home some things that we have not seen before. Never been to a state tournament softball, we brought home the championship, and it's been, people are trying to figure out, when was the last time we had an individual state track champion, and we believe it goes back to the 1990s. So congratulations to Elizabeth, and we hope to hear more of that as we go through the golf tournaments this week. So congratulations to all the Raider athletes on a great spring season. And those are the announcements and recognitions I have for today.
Excellent. Does anyone? Amy?
I just want to congratulate the Black Student Union on putting on the first-ever cultural night, which was a variety show that happened on Saturday, which I thought was interesting after school ended, but it was sort of like, for me, the final event of the year. And they had maybe ten different students perform, and it was a variety of acts, and it was a really fun evening, nice turnout, and I was really happy to see it, and hopefully do it again next year.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you, Amy. Any other comments? Okay, good. Well, we will move on then to our item. First report for discussion is, we welcome Mary Grace Hanson, Director of Teaching and Learning, to present the late start committee report. Hello, Mary Grace.
Thank you, and it's nice to be here on this beautiful summer evening. And so I do appreciate your time this evening. The following is the report of our late start, or what I refer to as our sleep committee, and the recommendations that this committee is bringing forth to the school board in order to make a change in the start time for the middle school and high school. And the purpose of this committee was to determine if a later start time was worth pursuing. We were not a problem-solving committee, nor did we deal with specific details or logistics. We looked at research, had discussions with people and programs that could be affected, and are making a recommendation about pursuing a later start time. We begin, as always, with our Northfield mission and vision statement, and you can see that we underline the word, well, italicize in this slide, the word "every student," and this committee had the potential to make a recommendation that would affect every student in our district. So the late start committee meeting met four times in the month of April, and we had a variety, the mixture of staff, administrators, two school board members, and experts, teachers that attended the meetings. We started our committee meetings with input from Dr. Hoff, very similar presentation to one he gave to the board several years ago. And Dr. Hoff wishes he could be here tonight, but he's at a medical conference in San Antonio for three days, so could not be here tonight. We also had heard from Dr. Kenneth Dragseth, former superintendent of Edina Schools, who instituted a late start in 1997, and heard from him about how beneficial that was. We had a subcommittee meeting with Val and Jenna Dartis from Benjamin Bus to determine what the impact would be on the bus company. And we had discussions and questions at each meeting, including Joel Lear and Greg Gellino, the two principals that would be directly involved, Joel Olson, because of course the implications for extracurricular and after-school activities are quite paramount, and Stephanie Stromy with food service, Molly Vissamone with contract issues, and Val Merdestorf with budget issues. Included in your packet was some research. Dr. Hoff and I met, another subcommittee meeting, and this was the research he particularly wanted the board to see, especially the first page of the research, which highlighted research from the American Medical Association, Center for Disease Control, and other entities that really did not have a bias as they went into this research. And the research summary was all of the things that a later start can have a positive impact on, or to reduce the number of car accidents, not just on the way to and from school, but even on the weekends. Loss of sleep can impact car accidents at that time, depression and suicidal thoughts, academic performance, sports-related injuries and performance, and both, this affects all students, whether you're a high-achieving student or a low-achieving student. And then you also had included in your packet the benefits of the Minnesota National Data on Teen Sleep. So our recommendation from the committee is, and I will read it directly, "In response to the research and as a result of our discussions, we recommend moving the middle school and high school's start times significantly later than the current times of 7:51 AM and 7:57 AM." So in June through November 2019, starting tomorrow, would be spent in identifying and overcoming obstacles, more of the detail-oriented work, being creative, finding potential solutions, and reimagining opportunities for implementation of a later start time in the fall of 2020. So what's next? Develop a plan, identify and address the issues and obstacles. Dr. Dragseth assured us that there would be many, and that they would all be able to be overcome, that they would need to be discussed, and then potential solutions would need to be found. Involve all the stakeholders and gather feedback from them, and then make necessary adjustments. And change is difficult, even if it's positive change, and for good reasons, so to realize the impact that change will have on, again, every student in our district, and be willing to address that and deal with that upfront. Have final decision and plan in place by the end of November, and then implementation in September 2020. And the biggest thing would be communicate, communicate, communicate all the way along. So that's my brief summary, and I would be happy to attempt to answer any questions.
Excellent. Board members. Amy?
Thank you, Mary Grace, for summarizing this and leading this committee for us. I was part of the committee, and I just want to add two cents into what Mary Grace covered, which was, she did a really good job covering everything. I think the committee was a very thoughtful committee, and already some of these different areas, Mary Grace has lists of the starting points for, because the committee started all of those discussions as well. I think the committee was just gathering information and not coming up with a specific start time, but the discussion ranged anywhere between 8:30 and 9:30. But I think a lot would depend on how all the pieces of the schedules fall together for the administrators and the other key people as they go through it. They have a lot of things to discuss, and I did see a little hesitation as people saw that there was a puzzle to be put together here, but overall, I felt that there was a lot of support from the group and a willingness to sort of dig into it and see what happens. They just want us to give them their, give us, give them our blessing at this point, to say, if you're, we're serious about this, if you want to go forward and really pursue this, we encourage you to think it through, because we really want to hear a plan and act on it.
Excellent. Thank you for the additional context. Other board members, questions? Ellen?
So I guess I'm curious about, thank you first of all, for the presentation and for all your work. Looking at the what's next piece, will, are you still thinking, I think initially the committee was, one of the sort of boundary conditions was thinking about, is this cost-neutral?
Right.
Is that still what the group going forward would be operating under?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Right, and it might cost more in one area, but if it could be offset from another area.
Okay. And then, I'm curious, so a final decision and plan in place by the end of November, would there, is there some thought, because that, the school year hits in September, and we, I would imagine since it's a pretty big change, that before that decision was in front of the board, that there'd be some community meetings or?
Oh, definitely. In fact, if we move forward with this, the principals would start tomorrow, or maybe the next day, with developing some plans, like, okay, if we start at this time, the impact would be this, and we'd have to bring together groups, and then be ready to have some parent input and student input. We did have two students on our committee, too.
And just to add to that, too, Ellen, is that I think that if, after this discussion, you know, there's some thought that we should keep moving forward and investing the time for the technical plan, you know, really talking about what the actual details are. I plan to send something to district families yet this week, congratulating them on a great 2018-19 school year, and then to give them some heads up about next year, one of which would be to start just letting them know that, you know, we had this committee that did this work, they suggested we look at it further, so we're going to be working and putting together some of the technical plan details over the summer, and then offering opportunities for people to come in and see the details and react to those in the fall. So we want to make sure we give a long runway for people to know that we're thinking about it, prime them to be able to come in and give us some feedback in the fall, so that we can try to make some kind of decision, you know, by November for exactly the reason that you suggested, that we know that people need a long runway to be able to make some of these changes in their family life, and so if we are going to make some kind of change for the 2020 school year, we want to make sure that we give them as much time to think that through as possible. So just to explain that, you know, we're going to start letting people know that we're strongly considering this, if that's what, you know, the board looks and says, there's not a strong objection to us doing so, we'll start getting, working on those plans, and then ask for people for direct feedback in a variety of methods in the fall.
Great questions. Other questions coming? Tom?
Did Dr. Dragseth from Edina have any idea how long it took them to change their time from the time they brought it forward to the time they changed it?
You know, I don't, I can't really recall what he said, but it was rather, I don't think it was any longer than what we were proposing. Right?
Other questions or comments? No?
What are other schools in the conference doing about late starts?
That was a question that we did ask Joel Olson, what would the impact be on our conference. Winona already does have a later start, and the rest of them, they have not seemed to have a problem with later starts. It might mean moving some of the athletic contests back a half hour.
Yes, go ahead.
What, what are their starts, Winona?
I believe they're at, oh, you're asking me to pull this from my memory. I believe they're after 8:30.
Right. I think 8:30 is reasonable, a half hour on that, so I mean, that's kind of, in that ballpark, but I'd be a little, little leery if you're pushing it, you know, nine, 9:30, you know, I, I don't know, I just, you get it. You want to sleep better, get better there. Sorry, so.
Other questions or comments? No?
I have a second question. I didn't realize the high school I went to was such a radical departure from their routine, but we started at nine o'clock, but the first hour was consumed with all kinds of activities. So if we start later, will the first hour be protected?
Do you mean, will, will we have a zero hour, or?
No. Will there be an opportunity where people say, well, if we're starting later, so we can put an event, we can put an activity into that, into an hour before we start?
Well, that might defeat the purpose of starting an hour, you know?
Exactly, for my question.
Okay. It would defeat the purpose of starting later, so we would have to make it clear that if school starts at X hour, that we do not start loading, you know, seven o'clock meetings.
My high school, we had band choir, magical, orchestra, all of those things, starting at quarter to eight.
Right. Yeah, we would have to-
Just until by quarter to nine.
Yeah, we'd have to protect that, because otherwise it defeats the purpose.
That's a really excellent question, Norm.
Yep.
So any other questions, comments?
So I think this, I mean, I'm really pleased that we're at this place. I mean, if we think and recall that it was Dr. Hoffman about five years ago who initially presented this to the board, and we were looking for opportunities and ways that we could potentially look at it. I don't think it's ever told, it's always been on our radar. I think as a board, we're aware of the research and how absolutely, you know, rock-solid the research is in terms of the benefit to students for this type of initiative. I think, Noel, you really kind of got at, and Amy as well, just a few of the technical issues around making this work. I think that we, we look at, you know, the, I think you highlighted, the communication issue is absolutely huge, I think, on this, because as a board, we are given a lot of opportunity to know the research, to understand the research, and those of us who have had secondary students really get it as well. So we have, we have, you know, a broad section of our stakeholders who some know and some really don't know, and I think it's really going to be key. And I think that when you talk about the long runway, I think that the plan in place is good. I don't think that we should necessarily feel like we have, you know, a strict deadline of, we need to do this by September of 2020. I think if the board's amenable, we should, you know, and everyone feels like we want to move forward, I think what Dr. Hillman said is, and Mary Grace highlighted, is we would start tomorrow in making this move forward, and then have direct administration to come up with a technical plan, addressing just a few of the things we highlighted, but really looking at and addressing some of the challenges that your committee did such a good job of, you know, bringing forward. So it, then, in, come fall, you know, we would, we would have an opportunity for the board to review that, and then also really take the opportunity then to, to take a look at what the communication plan is and the input from stakeholders. I think it's really important that we get it right versus having our, you know, our sights set on a specific deadline for implementation. So I think we're at a really good place, in my view, with this, in that we are going to take the next step in terms of seeing how this could potentially work for the district. So are, are board members feeling like that's the stuff we want to take at this point?
Okay. Good. So you have your work cut out for you.
Right. And Dr. Dragseth did emphasize to make the change and don't try to just piecemeal it. Do it and do it right the first time.
Yes, and I mean, when you look at, when you think about Edina, play, having that in place back in the late '90s, I mean, you realize how, you know, they were real leaders on this, and it's worked well for them, and so, you know, we know that there's many, many other districts that have made this work. I think, I appreciate Ellen highlighting the cost-neutral piece of it, because that really, that's really the challenge, and I think we have certain grade levels where, you know, there's, there's going to be a little bit more change than others, but, you know, until the plan comes together, we will, we will have the opportunity then to see where all that plays out. Yes, Jeff?
Would this open up more time, obviously more time in the morning, if people get there earlier, parents going to work and drop their kids off? I mean, obviously, they could study more in the morning. Or would there be more athletic practices or events or practices, people could show up earlier and do things? I mean, like you were saying, even where-
Well, probably not, but early ventures would still be available for parents, you know, at the elementary level.
Well, part of it, the world starts flipping at, you know, seven, eight o'clock, people with parents with them and drop their kid off to school. I mean, you drop your kid off to school at eight o'clock and it doesn't start till 9:30, that doesn't make a lot of sense, but, I mean, a half an hour delay and some other things in there, 45 is reasonable.
Right. And those are the details to be worked out.
Yeah, and Jeff, I think, you know, the key thing is that, you know, what we know is that it appears that getting especially teenagers that additional sleep because their biological clock has changed. So, you know, where you and I think, we'll just go to bed earlier, the truth is that the science and the biology is that kids' internal clocks for that timeframe from right when they hit puberty till about 22 or 23 actually change, and it shifts a few hours later. And what we know is that the research says if we can get kids that little bit more sleep in the morning, that it solves a number of the other issues that we have been trying to solve, you know, for some time in terms of mental health, physical health, academic performances demonstrated to go up, athletic performance has been demonstrated to increase by students getting more sleep. So it's a win all the way around, and the key thing is going to be finding what's the right mix. But I can tell you right now, if we do this, we will, I'm going to have to put into it saying, we cannot be having, you know, athletic practices before school, you know, or music groups, you know, meet all that long before school. We would shift it, you know, in terms of, you know, later, there's obviously a few things that meet a little bit before school, but we would really have to work to protect that. If we're going to invest in the time, you know, to be able to come up with a plan that addresses that, we can't allow segments of the district to, you know, create their own programming before school. The childcare, that will be available as it always has been, you know, I mean, and we would, you know, be able to provide and expand that as well. But we do think that this is good for, there's no question in our mind that it's really good for kids. The question that we have to wrestle with is, are we able to actually operationalize it, if you will, in Northfield? And every community is a little bit different, you know, in terms of the places in the metro that have been successful in doing this, you know, they don't have the rural bus route issue, you know, that we have. They're, they have a different truth and reality in their transportation. So there's a number of different things that school districts, and I agree with Noel, there are a lot of rural schools that start later, and that had to do with the chore schedule, you know, all those years ago when they started some of those. So different parts of the state have different reasons for why they have the start times that they do. We have to see how could we operationalize that here in Northfield and make it good for the kids, the people who work with kids, and make it a reasonable thing for the community and engagement, which we will come up with a plan that, you know, we believe will check those things off, and then we'll give you an opportunity to evaluate that plan.
Excellent. Thank you. And Mary Grace, thank you for your work, the committee's work that we saw. A lot of really great work, and it's kind of a, April is a very busy time of-
Well, and a lot of things got pushed into April this year.
So to squeeze four meetings in a month to come up with this great report is excellent. Thank you.
And Dr. Hoff and Dr. Dragseth said they would be available throughout our planning process to provide insight and input.
Dr. Hoff has been a great supporter of this for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So that is our first report. Our second report, Dr. Hillman, e-learning update and a 2019-20 calendar update. That information was in our packet.
Yes, and so in the past, you have seen the district e-learning guidelines, you saw those at the beginning of the school year last year in the fall. We had talked about it last spring, and now we have had, we thought we would pilot it, right? And we ended up with a case study. And so, you know, what we do is we learn from our experience, and we look at how can we improve things moving forward. So what I've included in your packet is a draft at this point of the e-learning guidelines for parents and students for next year. What I'm going to share with you are, what I would say are the highlights of the differences between how we initially implemented this year and how we are currently planning to implement for next year. And I think there were some things that we had in our plan to begin with, that the best thinking at the time, and reviewing other school districts' plans, that they were the best thinking, and we realized that there are some things that we need to do differently. So I'll just highlight a few of those things. First thing that you'll see is that we are not, you're no longer calling it flexible learning days, we are calling them e-learning days. And part of that is we have been using the word flexible quite a bit, right? Flex-hour, flex, you know, all those different kinds of things. So plus, we want to align with what the state law says. So the, the way that the state law frames what we had called flexible learning days is it calls them e-learning days. And so just so that there's no confusion between, you know, what is allowed under state law and our local plan, we are going to make sure that we start to use that term. As of this point, what we are still looking at is that the first two cancellations due to winter weather would not be replaced with an e-learning day. That is based upon the fact that a number of our employment agreements have that the first two school days missed due to weather would not be made up. The second piece is you'll notice that we have also talked about the fact that when we first started this, it was in the middle of a four-day closure, right? I mean, we had the polar vortex, and then cleanup from the polar vortex and all that, and one of the things that we learned was that two of these in a row, you know, can be challenging. So the way that we would look at this moving forward, if we had two consecutive closures that resulted in an e-learning day, the first day, we would have it as an official e-learning day, and there'd be some kind of activity or assignment, you know, provided. And then if there was a second consecutive day, teachers would still be working, you know, at the same regular hours that are in the e-learning day plan, but they wouldn't be assigning new activities. What we heard from some families was that when you had a second day's worth of activities that came forward, it felt like piling on, and then if there were some students who felt that it was, that they had gotten themselves in a difficult set of circumstances without having their teacher there physically available to help them through it. So again, the second day would, would still operate in a similar way. It wouldn't be an official e-learning day per the state, but teachers would be available online to help with any kinds of things that they needed to clean up from the day before. Now, those of you who have been on the board for a while know that consecutive day closures are somewhat rare, right? We just happened to have a couple of them this year. So that's one change that we're making based on the feedback that we had received from people. Another change that we'd be looking at moving is that we would be clearly identifying that we would set a limit of five official e-learning days for that purpose. And again, in most years, we think that that should be plenty, but that is what the law allows you to claim at the state level. Now, we could have more days that look like e-learning, we just can't count them for the purposes of student accounting through the MAR system. And that's where we start to get into the weeds of student accounting, but we would only account for five of those days. And again, in most years, not going to be an issue, right? So that's the second major change. A third major change compared to last year's is that we would no longer require teachers to provide a graded assignment. In our best thinking and trying to make sure that people were accountable on those days, we wanted students to submit some kind of assignment. Well, the intent of e-learning is to maintain the momentum of the curriculum during difficult winter weather stretches. But when we required, there are some days where a person, a teacher may have said, you know, I really don't need to have a graded assignment today, I might need them to watch this or read this, and then the plan was to come back tomorrow and discuss it. And so we got some feedback from some teachers, again, you've seen the data overwhelmingly, you know, supportive of this, but saying, you know, I don't want to assign busy- you know, supportive of this, but saying, you know, I don't want to assign busy work, you know, for the name of accountability and absolutely right. So what we're doing is trusting and saying to our teaching staff, if you had a graded assignment that would have been due that day anyway, of course, go ahead and have it due. If you were going to have an activity that's not graded, no problem. We were using that to try to take attendance. So we're going to do attendance in a little bit of a different way. We're going to start out making the assumption that it's an e-learning day, you're going to be here. And then just like on any other day, when you're not here, you can either call the attendance line and say, you know what, my, we have too much going on with our family today, I'm calling my child in absent or sick. And we'll also offer an online form that day for the convenience for parents to also fill it out and that way, again, to report if their student is going to be absent or miss that activity. Now, along with that, and again, in our best thoughts, we had provided three days after we came back from the weather event for students to submit their assignments. And again, our, it was really trying to make sure that we brought everyone forward and that if I'm one of the less than 5% of students who doesn't have an internet connection at my home, or if I have younger siblings who I'm caring for, that I have this extension to take care of it. The reports that I get back from teachers were that that was not the case for our students with those needs. Actually, what happened was, you know, students who live by deadlines said, well, hey, I don't have to turn this in up for up to three days. So students who could have used that day to do it, did not, and some of them utilized. And anyone who understands teenage psychology understand that this is a perfect manifestation of the age of life that many of them are at. So the way that we're going to look at that is that we're no longer going to have a three-day extension. We're going to expect the work to be completed the next day and then empowering students, if you have a reason that you could not get that done, we want you to tell your teacher that and we're going to expect our teachers to have empathy and grace, which we know that they will. If a student comes to them and says, you know, I had to care for my siblings yesterday because my parents had to work, or my boss called me and asked if I could come into work because of this, I couldn't complete the assignment yesterday, may I have an extension? That's no different than a student who got called into work later, who mom was sick. We work out those kinds of things all the time. So really what we're coming back to is, how do we do things on an e-learning day in a similar way to what we do when people are physically here? I think we thought so hard of how can we accommodate this and how can we make up for this that though, that thinking, again, you know, the best in a conference room in the summer when you're planning this, when it plays out, I think those are areas that we had for improvement. The other piece that we had heard from folks was that, of course, we had started out with just one matrix, you know, for the elementary students and using that same matrix for a couple of days, I think can get pretty boring. So we did create more matrices as the year went on, but we will provide for the elementary students a variety of activity matrices before the school year starts so that we have those in place. Again, who, who would have thought we would need more than one or two, but we needed more. So that's another piece, we're responding to what parents have told us, wanting more variety. And then I think the other piece was that we had two different surveys done. We had a survey that was done that we conducted after the first week of the e-learning days. We looked at that data, I gave you a preliminary report. Director of Teaching and Learning, Mary Grace Hansen, myself, Hope Langston and Kim Brisky went to Carleton College where we actually had turned, and Hope Langston was, I think I said Hope, we had turned that data over to this Carleton statistics class to say, hey, we had done an initial review of the data, these were our conclusions, could you please do a deeper dive and make sure that you validate those? And it's fair to say that they validated the initial review of the data that we had. Mr. Kudre's high school statistics classes, you're aware, they often do a end of the school year project that involves something to do with the schools. And they made, I think it was 178 people, 173 involved, they do a randomized call of parents and they get to learn that you sometimes have to call, you know, if you have 10 people you have to get, sometimes you have to make 20 calls because guess what? Some people hung up on them. But they got a, they got that number of 173 or 178 and they came up again with some similar conclusions for improvement that we had heard from the, the deeper dive on our Carleton study. And one of the pieces was a concern about the assignments being posted by 9:00 AM. And so while the administrators, myself, were doing spot checks on those mornings, you know, we trust that people were going to get those assignments up by nine, but we had enough feedback, you know, from people saying that not all of the assignments were available by 9:00 AM. And then we also had the circumstance this year where it's, it's very rare that it happens, but we had a circumstance where we had initially stated that we would have a two-hour late start in the morning because the 3:30 AM National Weather Service webinar had assured us that the snow would be done by 6:00 AM. Well, the snow didn't stop, as we all know, until eight or, and so unfortunately, we had to make a late decision to close school for that day and we felt it was too late to be able to say that we would execute an e-learning day. So by going to a 9:30 AM posting time, first of all, we can give people a little bit more time if they are, if they are notified on the morning of, and then also give the time that, you know, we tried to make the call and almost always were able to make a call by 7:30 AM if we've called a two-hour late start and then have to execute a closure. That is still two hours ahead of when the assignment would be posted, so we would be able to run a two-hour, you know, an initial two-hour late start as an e-learning day with this switched to 9:30 AM. And so just, we, what we want to share with you is that there, we really listened to what people had to say and we tried to identify, there's a range, what we had is a range. We had a, a ton of people say, loved it, it was great, perfect just the way it was. We had a number of other people, a, a smaller contingent, but still substantial, said, I hate it, you know, don't like it. So we tried to look at both of those extremes and then take the suggestions for improvement that we had in the middle and we looked at saying, what were the reasonable next steps? And so these are the plan, we're not asking you to vote on it tonight, but I'm sharing with you, you know, what the plan is. Last year, we didn't have you vote on it because we did not feel that we needed to, I mean, we, we needed to execute the plan, but I think moving forward, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, I will ask you to vote on it and approve it in addition to the calendar. Because really what we're doing is a calendar change. And we're not making a substantial calendar change, we're just simply saying that the make-up dates that we had previously identified would no longer need to be make-up dates because we would have been using the e-learning strategy to make up those days in-flight as opposed to the end of the year. So I tried to give you the details in your packet in, in good Norfield format, we're trying to keep it to one page so that it does not get too verbose. And so I would stand for any questions you might have at this time.
Okay, great.
I hope that made sense.
Yes.
Okay.
Complete sense, it was good, um, good review. So board members' questions. Tom?
So if you have the 9:30 start that fits in with the late start that we were talking about previously.
Almost as it fits together, Tom.
So do the elementary students need fewer school days per school year or fewer hours? And, and could they be excused for some of these snow days to, because they just don't, and they don't need as many hours as a upper student and, you know, for someone that age, just having a day off and playing is probably not a bad way of learning too.
Yes, Tom, that's a great question. Thanks for asking it. Couple of things is that all students across the state have the same minimum number of student contact days, that's 165 days, that's the minimum regardless of your grade level. Now, when you get to the number of hours, there is a sliding scale in the number of hours. And so it ranges from, I think it's six or 700 for kindergarten students to 800 and some, I think it's 850 for students in grades one through five and then six through 12 is 1,020, actually, it's grades seven through 12, it's 1,020 hours. So yes, students at those younger age levels have a lesser requirement for the number of hours, for sure. And the law does allow you to differentiate. You can say that we're going to use e-learning for this group of students, but not for this group of students. So that would be a possibility. Now, at the same time, we heard from a number of families through the survey, how appreciative they were of having the e-learning day because it gave them some academic things for their students to do. I had a couple of parents say, this is the kind of stuff I always tried to do, but when I said that their teacher assigned it, it all of a sudden became real. And so I also want to be really clear, there's a difference between the level of what we're assigning at the secondary level and the activity matrix, you know, at the elementary level. One of the best things, I think, around is that, is for students to be reading. There's some other indoor activities that are very healthy kinds of things to do that may not appear academic, but they were choice based upon the rubric, or the activity matrix that we shared. So in terms of student, in fact, two of the choices on the matrices include playing outside. So you get credit, you know, for going outside. And then we had to really rethink because remember, we had put this together thinking of snow. And so just before that polar vortex rolled in, we had to retool some of it to say, if your caregiver says it's safe, because it was not safe to say to those kids on January 29th and 30th to go out in the negative 54 to play. That would not have been a good thing for us. So we were able to learn a lot about how we could do it and the truth is that there are several, I also had a few complaints that people did not feel that it was substantive enough, you know, for them to count as a day, but we think it's a reasonable middle ground, you know, for people to be. And there was a lot of fun things that happened. I got some great screenshots of what teachers and students and families were doing through an app that we use called Seesaw. You know, there are kids who are baking with their parents, cleaning, it was, the, the activities overall were very healthy and I do think it hit that reasonable middle, Tom, of being enough to give parents some healthy academic activities for their students to do while also balancing the fact that it didn't take the whole day for elementary students. But the short answer to your question is that yes, it is possible for us to do that. I'm not sure that I'd recommend that at this point, but it is something we certainly could consider if that's a way that we decide to look at down the line.
Ellen?
So thank you for the thorough explanation. The, the one point I'm just a little confused about is the attached calendar, the possible make-up days for students. So is that, are those no longer, should, should this calendar look different or the eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th?
Uh, yes. So when we look at the, I think we just actually just missed it on the front, on the actual calendars. If you look at the back page, Ellen, you'll see that those days are crossed off. So I, I think it was an error on my part in terms of just not catching that portion there. Thanks for the clarification.
I saw that too.
There's one other piece that I failed to talk about if I, if I might just, in the interest of being thorough.
Absolutely.
Plus, our next presenters aren't quite here yet, so. The other complaint, I, I think, I think it's fair to call it a complaint, we had tried to frame it, especially at the secondary level, that the assignment for each class period would be roughly 20 minutes. And that was something we had learned from other districts that we had talked to, they said that when they implemented it, they didn't give a guideline, you know, for how long the assignment should be. And some of the feedback that they got initially was that, my goodness, there was actually more day, more work than a full school day's, you know, worth of work because as people are starting to understand how long does it really take to complete an assignment for me, they're trying, so we used the 20 minutes as an attempt at a guideline. We're also removing that. And, and one of the reasons that we're removing that is because we believe that teachers are, are beginning to understand what's the appropriate amount of time to ask for students, but it isn't, it's intended to be replacing the snow, you know, a school day. So if you think about this, it's really kind of basically a little bit of more than an hour late start to the school day. I typically have five and a half hours worth of class periods that I am doing during the day. Not that it has to completely replace that, but different classes will have different levels of need. What is offered for something in a one class may be very different than what is needed in another class. And in addition, because of the way that advanced placement courses work, the teachers in those classes are really looking to say, we need a full replacement because that test day and, you know, that we're preparing, isn't moving. And so there, there does appear to be some reasonableness to saying, when you chose to sign up for an advanced placement class, there's an assumption of some additional class work and work outside of the class that is required. And so therefore, on an e-learning day, there might be more in an AP class than there might have been in a different class. And so we just want to be able to actually come back and trust the people involved and monitor it just as we move forward. So that was something we heard complaints about and removing that I think is a healthy thing again, so that people are able to do what is necessary, not making it 10-hour worth of stuff, but to remove that, well, I worked 20 minutes and 30 seconds on this, so this doesn't qualify well. We all know that there's varying amounts of things that are needed for each class. So I, thank you for indulging me for that last thorough explanation.
Excellent. Amy?
I have three questions. The first, I'm, was kind of thinking the same thing that Ellen was talking about and I just want to make sure, I understand, we're getting rid of all make-up days?
That's correct.
And we don't even think there's a chance that we might want to leave them on the calendar just in case there's some reason that we probably won't use them?
So just, so if you think about it, if we can all, if we can all hope that this year is the worst-case scenario, right? 11 days, it's two and a half times more than what we've ever canceled before. And so with five e-learning days, those count as regular days of instruction. So we are still nine more days above the state minimum. So if you really think about it, we, those days would count as regular days. So with those five days, we would actually have to cancel 14, more than 14 days in order to get to the state minimum where we would think about, you know, wanting to do makeup. In the past, if you think about it, we only ever assigned two make-up days to the calendar, you know, under the assumption we would, really wouldn't make up more than a couple of days. So I'm comfortable, I think one of the trade-offs is doing the e-learning days is, one of the things we heard over and over from people is that this is far better than coming back to school in June. And so I think that that's the trade-off if we're gonna, if, if we're gonna continue with this, then I think we need to tell people, you know, we're not going to make up any days because we still, I mean, if we end up canceling 14 or more days, we all have bigger problems, you know, substantially bigger problems than, than that. So I think this puts us in the, about the best position we can be in. And then it, it honors that trade-off that, hey, we're gonna ask you to make it up in-flight. We've never asked people to make up more than a couple of days in the past and this would be in line with, we'd actually be making up more than what we had made up in the past.
So do we have to vote on this or are you just-
So technically, I don't believe that you need to. I mean, as you read the law, you don't have to, I mean, we presented it, but I am going to ask you to formally approve it this year. So I will bring it back in, in most likely probably the early August. I want to make sure we have another month to just fine tune it and make sure that it's on. But I will ask you to approve it this time, even though I don't believe that it's necessary. But I think, what I do need to have you approve is the change to the calendar. Because that's, the board approves the calendar, that's the part of this that I think is required for the change. And if you're gonna change the calendar, I think you should have the reasons behind changing the calendar officially.
All right. And I still have two questions.
Yep.
The first is not really a question, it's more of a comment. I like the idea that parents can call and their students absent, but I still think it might be confusing. And, and I'm just going to say that you're gonna have to explain that so carefully.
You got it.
Maybe give examples, because of course the kids are absent, it's a snow day.
Right.
And so, I don't know, I don't, I don't have an answer, I'm just saying, watch that because I think people will be confused by a snow day absence compared to a regular absence.
And I think the way we'll frame it in our communication is that if your student is not able to participate in the e-learning days on the day of the, of the snow day and you'd like to excuse them from it, just like you would excuse them from a normal day's, you know, worth of activities, whether that be that they're too ill to do the work, whether that be that they have childcare responsibilities or other thing, that would be when you would call your student in. But providing people that option, we think, and very few people, the, the way that people do attendance on these days is, is very different. We think that this has got a very good chance that what kind of opt-out, if you will, option is probably the cleanest way to do it, but who knows, we may do it a completely different way the following year. But in this way, we think that, because we heard from enough people too, saying, well, we prefer to do other things on these days. Okay, as a parent, if you call your student in, we recognize and honor that. And so it would be no different than, you know, on a regular school day. And I think that that's the lesson that I've continued, how can we make sure that what is being done on the e-learning day and how we, the process we use is as similar to how we do it on an in-person day? That appears to me to be, you know, we, I think frankly, we overthought it quite a bit last year. And that's okay. I'd prefer to do that the first time around than be saying, oh, we wish we'd have thought about that more. So I think it's a natural way that we'll be able to articulate it to individuals.
I think also, though, they'll need to understand that even if they call their kid in absent, the kid still will be responsible to do the work.
Yes, very true.
Because that might be, well, they, they, you call them in absent, so they shouldn't have to do the work that was assigned that day. And so, just another comment. And then, my last question has to do sort of with the bigger picture again. I remember earlier this year, you talked about improving the bus situation. So, those
Yes.
Few outlying people would have alternate bus stops if their roads were particularly difficult. And my question to you is, this year, if we had had that already in place, how many fewer snow days would there have been?
Zero. I think there's a possibility that there might have been one day that we could have done a two-hour late start instead of a cancellation. But when I go back and review, we were plagued by nearly every kind of crazy weather pattern this year. And, you know, as you all have gotten to know me pretty well, that I am a pretty darn good Monday morning quarterback, you know, in terms of looking back and reflecting upon the decisions that were made, looking at new data that we didn't maybe necessarily have at the time, and say, hey, had we known this at the time, would we have done something differently? And you have all seen me tell you that I would have done that differently on more than one occasion. In this case, as I look back at the 11 days, I can't say I would make a different decision on any of those days. There's one day that was in, in February, it was a, it was the morning after, when we were supposed to get two and a half inches of snow from noon to six, and we got nine. It would have been possible, I think, that that day, rather than having to cancel, had we had some alternate stops in place, the way that the county was able to get that cleaned up, we might have been able to do an alternate stop. But the issue is, remember, we're dealing with four different jurisdictions in Plowin'. And there's one jurisdiction that we're dealing with, with is MINDOT, you know, who does the state highways. We have the city of Northfield that does the city streets. We have the, actually, five. We have the county. And then, we also have, I think it's how many, how many townships that we did, we think, we think we have 14 or fif, I mean, it might be a 10 or
I would say 10 or 11.
So, 10 or 11 different, all of whom have their own plows. And what I can tell you is that we know they all have a different plowing schedule as well. And so, when we did use these alternate stops, pardon me.
Three counties.
Yes, and three counties. When we did use the alternate stops, not because of snow, but because of the freeze thaw, we used an alternate stop in just a very small number of bus routes that worked very well. So, what we had talked about with Benjamin Bus is that we were going to wait till the school year finished, and then we would get together to talk about, and this was a suggestion that had come from a parent, why not just put an alternate stop location on every single rural route card? So that if we know that, you know what, the county roads have been cleared, and the city streets have been cleared, but we're waiting for some townships, we had a parent on, when we, we actually couldn't transport one day because the ice on that road was so bad, the tow trucks wouldn't even go out to get our stuck bus because that township had not salted. And the parent said, I'll get them to wherever, I mean, we'll snowmobile them, you know, out to this road. And thus, was the alternate stop piece born. You used to do plowed roads only, but that isn't really something that is, an area that we can go down. But I think that the alternate stop is something we're looking into further. We need to find out how feasible it is to do for all areas. And I would see alternate stops being very limited. I would, I don't think I would see them for a regular start time, right? I don't think we would say, we're gonna do a regular day, but we're gonna do alternate stops. I would see it for the time when we would do two-hour late start using the alternate stops, because that means that the other major thoroughfares have been cleared, that we were just waiting for townships, you know, to be able to finish and provide that. So, that's something we're gonna look into. I do think we could have maybe, and of course, this is 20, you know, hindsight is 20/20 on this one, maybe we could have gotten away with one, two-hour late on a day that we canceled. You go back and forth on that one. But it would be another tool that we would have to be able to address that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Excellent. Other questions or comments? Jeff?
Are there other schools, and this calendar's fine, obviously, we proved this back in March 12th, that use, are there public schools that use a Minskew compatible calendar?
So, very few. In fact, if you remember all those years ago, the FLY schools, the flexible learning year schools, there was a whole consortium of them in the southwestern part of Minnesota who tried to align with the Minskew calendar. They have actually since gone away from it. And part of it was that they did not see the academic return on the investment that they thought they would. But interestingly, there are some school districts, even Albert Lee just recently switched to an earlier start flexible. So, you know, you had the original people who did the flexible learning year calendars that have gone back from it. And then, you're starting to see a handful of other districts making that choice for some different reasons. The southwestern schools made it because they were struggling because of the declining enrollment in that part of the state. They were really looking to use Minskew as their advanced program. It didn't quite pan out the way that they had initially thought it was. I haven't talked specifically to a number of those people, but I do know that Albert Lee in the last couple of years has switched to the earlier start. And that's not earlier start, and that's earlier start in the school year.
Other questions or comments? Okay. So, we will, you're, look forward to having this back in August. I just had one question. The board approves the calendar, the e-learning, and then is there an MDE approval process?
There is not.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you. So, Sal Bagley from WOLD, I know had a previous presentation, actually, this evening in Owatonna. And she's not here. So, I would like to recommend that we continue moving forward with the agenda. And then, we certainly have Sal step to the podium and present her report as soon as she is able. So, that means we will move on to the consent agenda, since Sal is obviously the last report on the agenda. So, we will move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve consent moved by Jeff? Is there a second? Second by Ellen. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then let's segue then into items for individual action. Again, moving forward until Sal gets here. The Achievement and Integration Program, as presented at our previous board meeting in May, Mary Grace Hansen presented that report to us, or the, the plan for the integration plan. It does need to be submitted to MDE for final adjustments and approvals. So, we, as part of that process of moving forward with MDE, we do need a formal approval by the board. So, this is an item for individual action. Is there a motion to approve the Achievement and Integration Program as presented? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Rob. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. We have Mary Grace Hansen here this evening. We have the information that was in our packet, as well as our, we know of Mary's previous presentation to us. So, are there any questions or comments specifically on the plan? No. I did have a question. So, Mary Grace, you will submit this, obviously, to MDE for approval. Do you anticipate how long it will take before we would hear from MDE? Is there some experience other districts are having with the turnaround on this?
Well, we did ask Val to ask about that, because we do have some deadlines that are pending on approval of this.
Sure.
And they said within four to five business days.
Oh, excellent.
As long as someone is available to take any questions or revisions, they would have.
Good. That's good news.
And the good news is, I will be available for questions and revisions if MDE has any.
Okay. Excellent. And I know you said you would start implementation immediately. Do you know?
July, after July 1st.
But, but moving towards an implementation. So, what are some of the immediate next steps you would need to, to really move on, assuming we would hear and our plan would be approved?
Hiring the additional personnel, especially like the Odyssey Ware program at the high school. It would be needing a teacher for two to three days a week, and an educational assistant for five days a week. You know, we'd have to start advertising the academic advocate for the ALC. Some of the positions would need to be listed immediately in height.
Sure. That makes sense.
And, you know, one of the pieces that we have held on, you know, before, we didn't want to assume board approval, are the official job descriptions for these positions. So, that's really, I think, is what the, Mary's next step is, is to work to create the job description as we're waiting for the state approval, and then looking to post that once we know that we've got the state approval. So, I think there's a couple of steps there that we would work through, you know, to prepare for that.
Right. Some of the positions are similar to positions we already have. So, when Val and I had talked too about the budget, we have some job descriptions pretty well ready to go for some of those positions.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the Achievement and Integration Program as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item for individual action is the Policy Committee Recommendations. We are specifically looking at approving Policy 722, renumbering current Policy 722 to 719. As you're aware, we did present these as first reading at our May 28th, 2019 board meeting. And these changes will be effective on July 1st, 2019. So, is there a motion to approve the policies as presented?
They're moved.
Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Okay. Any questions or comments specifically regarding these policies? Yes, Ellen?
So, this is, I'm not that concerned, but I just was curious. So, in the costs, this is on policy, request for summary data, which is part of the Policy 722. So, I was just curious, the cost for public data versus summary data. The summary data talks about the cost materials, including paper, the cost of labor required to prepare the copies, any schedule of standard copying charges established by the school district. Seems like we would have the same, the copying cost would be the copying cost. So, I was just curious as to why the public versus, I'm not that concerned, because the, the public one also says the actual cost of making copies. Says it in a much like, sort of succinct way. So, I didn't know if there was some nuance that was missing.
That is the language that we got.
MSBA policy, yeah.
So, I think that there's some minor difference there in how it's approached. But the bottom line is that, you know, we are able to charge, we should, we actually should charge, you know, for the copies. There are multiple ways that we can provide that data. We can provide it digital. There's some other things that we can do. And then, you know, the key thing is, any cost of the labor, we need to be able to use the least costly person who would have a legitimate access to that data. So, it's possible that that's the reason that it's different.
Yeah, yeah. No, that, that makes sense. Excellent catch. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there, are there any other questions regarding the Policy Committee Recommendations? Okay. So, with a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, we'll go on now to the Family Program Co-Curricular Student Citizenship Handbooks, of which we've all had an opportunity to review. And then, we specifically had questions at our May 28th meeting. So, first reading of these program changes, or handbook changes, excuse me. So, is there a motion to approve the handbooks as presented? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any questions or comments, board members? Ellen?
I just have a comment that I was really pleased with how they turned out in terms of the look and feel, and the amount that went into the co-curricular one in particular, I think, will reap benefits next year.
Excellent.
We just want to, that's all Anita. You know, so Anita is helping with the formatting, and she's helping make sure that we're creating some consistent look across the board on them. And again, we thank Joel Olson, Activities Director, who has also looked at, you know, the old handbook had both coach and student. And we wanted, we felt pulling those apart would make sense, so that was more readable for both. So, I appreciate that reinforcement.
Yes, from going to a 96-page co-curricular to 21 was, was good. And I absolutely agree. I mean, Ellen and I, and all those who have been on the board my 10th year, this was absolutely the best process, because we were able to really see what we were proving and changing. And I, I think it's always, it's, it's very unwieldy, and I applaud Anita for finding a really streamlined way to make this work. So, thank you, thank you. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Wow, look at
And I've got a text from Sal. Her ETA is 8:06. So, she
Oh, excellent. So, we'll just keep working. And I think we can likely get through this last item for individual action. This, in the packet, was the proposed, and it's like Christmas, we love getting this, because it's just really such a great summary, and it's really, you know, it really brings together all of the, the work that particularly Val has done for us as we started presenting budgets back in January. And here we are, presenting the, the formal budget. So, is there a motion to approve the proposed 2019-20 budget as presented for all funds and as presented here? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Noel. Questions or comments, board members? No? Just that we really appreciate all of your work. We love this budget book. This is one that just is so wonderful and straightforward and really great work. So, thank you, Val.
Thank you.
Okay, so, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a proposed 2000, a finalized 2019-20 budget. I guess we can do one more at least here. So, we have in a, it's the engagement letter. I'm going to read the motion, because it is an item for individual action. Is there a motion to accept the 2018-19 engagement letter from Clifton Larson Allen in the amount of $23,700 plus expenses and approval of the HIPAA Business Associate Agreement? Is there a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Tom. We have Val here, poised and ready to answer any questions. No questions. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, oh, I'm, that was not a resolution. I'm sorry. The next one is a resolution, which is establishing procedures for reimbursement of certain expenditures from proceeds of future bond issues or other borrowing. So, is there a motion to approve that? Moved by Tom. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. So, are there any questions or comments specifically on this approval? No? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Anita?
Grewit?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Rania?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. So, our last resolution, as you know, Val has presented to us as GAS V 84, correct?
Correct.
Or is asking us to make this change. So, is there a motion to approve the resolution regarding board control of extracurricular activities? Is there a motion? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Tom. So, again, Val has teed this up a few times for us. Here we are at the approval process. So, does anyone have any specific questions around this motion? This is also a roll call vote.
Grewit?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Rania?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye. So, that does take care of our items for individual action. We could move in now, Dr. Hillman, with the end-of-the-year enrollment report, which as a reminder, was in our table file. I see Sal has walked in, but we'll give her a moment to get herself situated.
Is that good a timing, or?
This was excellent.
Actually, quite excellent timing, Sal. But we'll, we'll talk about the, let me, I'll talk about the enrollment report to give you a chance to
We'll actually give you a chance to breathe. So, if that's
I can go if you like me to.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll do the enrollment report, because then we will, after Sal's report, we would segue into the construction update. So, that's a good, good segue. So, Dr. Hillman, highlights of the enrollment report, that again, was in our table file.
Yeah, so if you take a look at the grand total, it includes early childhood and part-time or independent ALC students, you'll see that we are, again, just up a couple of over last month. Very consistent in the last few months. And then, we take a look at the account for the full-time only, excluding the early childhood and part-time independent study students, you'll see that we ended the year at about where we're just a couple of students less than we were last month, but a few were more than where we were in April, at a total of 39, 64 and a half students. And again, the half comes from the fact that we still have some work with St. Dominic where they're counted for halftime. So, you'll see that that is where we landed at the end of the year. And as you know, we are continuously taking a look at the enrollment report and using it to try to forecast as we move forward. So, we are understanding who we are serving and how many and in what grades. So, that's your end-of-the-year enrollment report for 2018-19.
Excellent. Any questions on that, board members? Amy?
So, do some of the full-time students become part-time students? Is that why the full-time goes down and the part-time goes up, or?
Yes, it very well could. So, what you may end up having, especially with students at the Area Learning Center, they may have enough credit to where they don't need to be here full day, and they may be doing some credit recovery. So, they would only qualify to be part-time students in those circumstances.
Okay, excellent. All right. Thank you. Well, so, we can now move back to an item for report, which is the Greenville Park Elementary and Sibley Elementary Updates. Here to present those are Sal Bagley, Architect with WOLD Architects and Engineers. And just a reminder, board members, there was a revised presentation in your board table file. So, if you want to be sure, you're working off the latest copy of that. Sal, thank you for rushing here from a previous, another commitment. So, we appreciate you coming.
No problem. Thanks for accommodating me. I don't know, you guys wouldn't know anything about this, but sometimes board members have questions. So, I appreciate you accommodating me. Thanks for having us. So, we are here to give an update of both the new Greenville Park design process, kind of what's been happening over the past couple of months, where we're at, maybe in the next the next month, month and a half, and then some future next steps, as well as for Sibley. So I'll go through that. So I'm just going to jump right here to remind everybody, um, the phases that we used to describe a project in architecture are schematic design, design developments, construction documents, and then bidding and construction. So, um, for new Greenville Park, um, we are in what's called the construction documents phase. So, um, what we are doing right now is, um, doing some final engineering and really drawing details up so that we can issue drawings, um, mid-July to contractors for bidding. Um, so we've been doing the significant input from all of your stakeholders over the past few months and we're now moving into really more of a documenting phase before we go out for bid. So to remind everybody, the core planning group and the referendum scope, maybe for those who might be watching at home, um, the program overview is a new K-5 elementary school designed for future expandability. Um, it's about 90,000 square feet, um, designed to be for 600 students. There's five classrooms each planned for grades K through three and four classrooms each for grades four and five. Um, and then some maybe important highlights are designed around grade level clusters with flexible learning spaces and staff, um, staff support areas, um, special services, classrooms and offices. Um, and then many of the other things you would expect to see in an elementary school media center, um, art, music band, et cetera. Um, the site is proposed to be on the current Greenville Park Elementary site, um, directly to the east of the building. You'll see that in just a minute. Um, and the planning process we used, um, we started with a core planning group. So that's really made up of staff, community members, administration, um, parents and other stakeholders who helped us set the philosophy and vision of the building and as well as land the major adjacencies. Um, so that core planning team, um, met several times throughout, um, January and February, um, and developed principles and guiding criteria. I won't read everybody's name. Um, and then I think we went over these guiding principles and criteria at our last board update, but I'll hit the highlights. Um, so lots of importance about fostering a sense of community and supporting collaboration, both for students and staff, um, incorporating sustainability and energy efficiency wherever possible, um, supporting community services. Obviously, there's a couple of programs that, that are unique to Greenville Park that, um, create some other opportunities for students. Already mentioned, being organized into grade level learning communities and having that flexible learning area and, um, lots of focus from the core planning group on, um, planning for the future and adaptability for the future, just knowing that things always change. And then under design criteria, um, first and foremost, importance for safety and security, both inside the building and outside. Um, we actually had a meeting with the city today to continue to develop the site plan. I don't know if Dr. Hillman already gave an update of that. Talked about the relationships, um, that are important within the school, especially in the main office for security. So, um, who needs direct line of sight to who's approaching the building as well as support for reception. Um, and then talked about that classrooms need four walls, which will be a big change for Greenville Park, um, but also still have an important focus on natural daylight and visibility into that resource area. Let's just scroll past a couple of these. So, um, the schematic site diagram, um, currently shows the new building, um, like I said, directly to the east of, I can probably gesture with this, directly to the east of the current building. Um, the existing parking lot is proposed to be, um, basically flipped in function. Right now, the buses park along this curb line to support current Greenville, um, so to strike busing along the east side of that lot to support the new Greenville and then have this function as really staff parking for, um, the future functions of current Greenville. And then in the front of the building, having a parking lot, um, with about 100 parking stalls and then a parent drop-off loop. This has changed very slightly even as of today with our meeting with the city, but, um, we continue to get to the detail level of where sidewalks are and crosswalks and, um, just received our traffic study back. So the site diagram is, um, continues to evolve. We had a good meeting today. Um, so at the end of schematic design, so the end of the core group's work, this was their design diagram, um, maybe some hit the highlights here. Main entry right next to the main office, which is this goldenrod color. Um, and then really the building has multiple lockdown opportunities, both from safety and security and also just to support, um, evening and weekend function. So a lockdown line here that would separate the gym and cafeteria, maybe uses, that'll be, um, nights and weekends from the rest of the academic areas, as well as the ability to lock off all of the classroom pods at each level. The building's really designed to have, um, two levels, I'll flip to the upper level here, um, that are very, very similar in nature, both for flexibility as well as to be compact on the site and to be efficient in our footprint. So we've got grades, um, K-1, 2 on the first floor, along with the media center and a few of the specialists. Um, and then upstairs is grades 3, 4, 5, um, and then the rest of the specialists and the flex labs. So this was the diagram before we went into the user group process. Then we went, started into the user group process. Um, every group was met with at least twice. We've got a list of people who attended one or more of those meetings here on this slide. Um, and those meetings happened, um, on a variety of days throughout April and May, really whenever we could fit into the building's schedule. Um, and so the, the way that those user group meetings work is we had a, a meeting in, for example, in particular about the art room. And where's the door and where's the teaching wall and what do the cabinets look like? And do we need a kiln room? Um, where might the teacher desk go? To that level of detail with everybody to make sure we get the function and detail level of every room right after landing the major adjacencies. So, um, every, every group I said had at least two meetings and some had to get three to get it right. Um, so at the end of that process, we are now through what's called design development. Um, so this is the updates to the floor plan. Um, so I'll point out maybe some differences from the diagram you saw before. Um, there's some change in circulation as we figure out engineering. Um, before we had our specialist or special ed, um, right next to music and the idea came to put the staircase between them for some acoustic separation. So that was a, a comment that came out of the user group process. Um, we've learned a lot more about the kitchen and servery and the operations there from your food service department or nutrition services. Um, and then you can start to see things manifesting like layouts of bathrooms and names on a lot of the small group spaces like our coaches and speech, um, things like that. So these documents, um, really start to lay out where electrical outlets go and should glass have, or doors have glass in them? Um, how long should the markerboard be? How far off the ground should it be depending on the age level? So, um, this is a, a large book that captures all of those decisions. Um, we just gave final copies to, um, Dr. Hillman and Val and Jim on Friday, as well as a couple of copies for Sam. Be more than happy to share that. Um, but that's really a representation of all those commitments we made to the users. So we've been going through that process for the past couple of months, um, as well as on a parallel track, um, starting to talk a lot about architecture. So the core group had given us some, I'll call them guiding principles about how they wanted the building to look and feel, um, namely that they wanted the building to feel very much of Northfield and maybe even more so, uh, feel part of a campus, given that the two buildings, um, will continue to be next to each other. So to speak to each other and inform each other, but also, um, have an air towards modern, modernity. Um, so we started talking about some exterior precedents. So I'm going to go through exterior architecture first and then interior. Um, I'll say these are hot off the presses. They weren't in your, um, original board packet because we just had a meeting on Friday to review them, um, with a smaller group and we did bring physical samples and talk about a couple of changes, actually. So, um, they continue to evolve. Um, but the importance of having both brick, um, to be evocative of the current building as well as some of the other districts' buildings, um, while also bringing in some of those more modern materials like metal panels. The core group saw a couple of different buildings on tours and, um, liked the interplay of those two things. Um, the importance of natural daylight, um, couldn't be overstated at this building and how we heard that from the core group and really celebrating that, so highlighting fenestration. Um, and then they also gave us the charge of being inspired by nature, um, and also sort of an air towards timelessness or the timelessness that nature provides. So taking those things as inspiration. Um, so the proposed exterior materials, um, I don't know, I'm going to jump forward a slide actually for a moment, just to show you a couple of pictures of existing Greenville Park. For those who might not be familiar, um, actually has a pretty significant variety in brick color, brick tone, um, four to, four or five distinct colors. So, um, and then also there's this, uh, precast panel cap that, um, is at across most of the building, sometimes in a smaller strip, um, but at the main entry canopy and at the gym and quite a bit of a larger cap. So taking inspiration from those, um, your current browner brick color as well as the lighter brick color, um, and then matching that tone in precast concrete, which the gym is proposed to be made of, of tip-up precast concrete panels. Um, and then using that same tone in metal panel and brick, which you'll see in a minute, um, as well as the core group challenges to have the building be both timeless but also inspirational and exciting to students. So trying to balance timeless materiality with a little bit of interplay with our Molyne and pattern and the way we're using materials. Um, so I'm going to step you through a couple, uh, renderings. These are, um, computer renderings and I'll orient you and then, um, any of the relevant building materials are shown in a little icon at the bottom in the bottom left. Um, so right now, we are standing in the proposed new main parking lot. Um, to the left, the front doors, kind of dead ahead, you'll see a little bit zoomed in in a minute. Um, this is the main office volume, the cafeteria, which is about a story and a half size space. Um, and then these are those music and special ed classrooms and other specialists. Um, and then we're seeing one of the classroom towers in the foreground here. Think it, um, it's a little easier to see on another view, so I'm going to go into that there. Um, we are now in the existing parking lot, having been striped for buses here. Um, so this would be the bus drop-off and the bus sidewalk here. Um, another view of the, um, cafeteria here. Um, some things you might note here is the use of the light brick to call out some more, um, specialty spaces that everybody goes to. So you'll see it on the cafeteria, the main entrance to call attention to it, um, and then on the backside, I'll show you a view of the media center. Um, but also taking inspiration from the current building, if I go back, um, you have these longer, skinnier windows that are often framed in a different color or brick that sits proud or, um, sticks out further than the rest of the brick. So taking some inspiration from all of that detail work in the masonry that you have Um, so here's a closer view of the parent drop-off as we get closer to that main entry. So again, um, cafeteria is kind of just, um, in the background over here. This is the main office volume, um, lots of windows, um, for supervision for safety and security. That's one thing we actually talked about on Friday about, um, maybe even increasing that a little bit in a couple of key spaces. Um, and then calling attention to the main entry here with a canopy and a different color brick. Uh, when it comes to the exterior of the classroom pods, so you'll notice on the floor plan, there's parts of the floor plan that are rectilinear and there are other parts of the floor plan that are at an angle and that cracking open really is what creates those resource areas. Um, and after lots of iteration and discussion, um, the, the way we are taking the language of the current windows at Greenville Park is on any of the parts of the floor plan that are at an angle, taking that same long linear window language that's framed around a lighter material and applying that to those classrooms. So, um, these are, this is a, a collection of two classrooms on, on each floor, um, that is at an angle in the floor plan. And so we're really highlighting those windows in particular. And every classroom would have the same amount of glass, so these are also classrooms, um, but taking those rectilinear elements and using an interplay of brick and metal panels. So you can see, um, brick about two-thirds of the way up out the wall here and then changing to metal panel and then that inverting on the angular parts of the floor plan. So brick to, um, uh, six feet higher, maybe six and a half feet high, I think, um, and then changing to metal panel. So it was also important from the facilities department that, um, metal panel was not within student reach, so for durability. Um, this is a stair tower here, again, highlighting some of those specialty spaces. Um, and then it might've been a little bit easier to see on this view of the media center, but we've also been working with, um, Monty, your chief of police, about, um, glass and expectations of glass resistance and where, um, glass should resist view into the building or impact. So you can see there's a different, um, type of glass up to about door height and then, um, more colorful glass and spanner glass above that. And then last but not least, I think this is my last exterior view, um, this is, so we're standing, there's a classroom tower to our left and then, um, this is the media center here and this is the doors, um, that are proposed to be used to go out to play. So those are, um, just between the media center and the classroom areas. Um, and then the new gym, which is proposed to be precast and take quite a bit of inspiration from, um, both the existing gym has a lot of interesting, um, insets and, um, I'll say protrusions in brick and masonry, um, while still getting some natural daylight. So these are long, uh, linear windows that are actually made of a translucent material so you don't have direct daylight on the court, which can be challenging for games. So, um, again, trying to take the architecture that you already have on your campus and translate it in a new way for a new era. Any questions or comments before Val and Dr. Hillman and Ellen were at the meeting on Friday and Jim, who's not here, um, but we reviewed this with, um, Sam as well? Yes?
Um, you talked about how this would be open for expansion at some point?
Yeah.
So that's my question. Where do you see the expansion being possible?
Absolutely. I'm going to go back to our schematic site, or actually, I'm going to go back to the floor plan here. Um, and I can show you on the site plan as well, but, um, the building is being situated on the campus such that you are able to add another classroom on both levels here so you could utilize the same stair tower and then access the flexible learning area. So on the end of every classroom tower, um, we're situating the building on site such that, um, you have room to do that. And then areas like the, the cafeteria, um, are, are not so close to other elements that that could be expanded if you were to do so. I'm not sure the district's enrollment is projected to go above the 600 the building's being planned for, but just always being mindful of that, you know, buildings get it on, added on to in ways that weren't planned. So on your, on your very tight site or very, um, well, uh, well-utilized site, um, trying to be mindful about that. I don't know if Dr. Hillman, any other comments about that?
I think you nailed it.
We have to think about that, um, for things like, so the way that that impacts now is where utilities come into the building. So we don't want to put the water main grade under where you might want a classroom in 10 years. Um, or setbacks right now. So we really need to think about those when we're situating the building so that you could add those and not be in violation of city ordinances. So having those conversations with the city on an ongoing basis, we had our third meeting today. Yes, Noel?
Can you flash up the, um, the renovated parking lot pattern?
Sure. I'd be happy to. I can click fast enough.
Would you explain to me the route that a bus would take as they leave the parking lot?
Sure. So right now, um, just for those who may not be familiar, buses come in and drive through parking area and then they park at an angle along this curb. Um, so we're proposing to really almost 180 rotate that. So a bus would come in and park along the curb because we always want our doors along the sidewalk so that students don't step off the door directly onto a sidewalk and don't walk around. Um, and then you need to leave enough space at the end of the parking lot here so that the bus can make its turning radius without having to back up and then come down this drive aisle and leave.
Doesn't it appear that they're coming down the aisle that the cars are coming into?
Coming down the aisle that the cars are into.
On the left side.
Oh, with the striping angle?
The striping angle.
Sure.
The cars will be bus, uh, be, um, facing the buses coming out.
Sure, great point. So, um, uh, our traffic study we got back last week actually recommended that we re-stripe this lot to be all 90-degree parking. So the angles in the parking, um, right now, I think they're 40-degree angles. It'll all be 90-degree backing, two-way traffic. So, great point.
So the buses will, will be exiting the, uh, the 90-degree parking for the cars?
Correct. Yep. Similar to the way that they, um, they enter that way right now. So they'll be exiting through that. Other questions? Yes?
On the entrance canopy, how far do they go out? And the reason I ask is, you know, if you have an umbrella or the kids are coming in close enough that they knock it off outside of the building to bring less into the building?
Sure. So I believe it sticks out about four and a half feet right now. So a little bit of doors, 32 inches, and it's a little bit past that. So when somebody's opening the door, they can be under the canopy. And then we've also had some discussion about the depth of the vestibule here. So making sure to have enough room between the two sets of doors that we can get some stuff off of our shoes on the walk-off carpet. And there's a similar canopy shown at the doors out to play or another exit there. So a little bit deeper than the width of a door. Yeah, of course.
Back to the slide of the parking lot.
Sure. We should've put our new site plan in the presentation that was meeting in the 2:30, so.
The walking sidewalk to the current school in the dark winter season is poorly lit.
Okay.
Will there be changes in the lighting or is that the district's responsibility apart from this project?
That's a good question. That's the first I've heard of lighting issues.
There's one light from the lower right corner to the.
Oh, sorry, you're saying on this half of the site it's poorly lit. I thought you were talking about this sidewalk over here.
I'm saying there's one light between the lower right corner and the new building and the current building. Maybe there's two.
Sure. At this time, it's proposed that the parking lot be lit with shielding. So I think we'll improve on that. Certainly can bring that to the attention of the electrical engineers.
I'm speaking of the walking path.
Yep.
If we would encourage people to walk to the school in the evening for activities, it'd be well to have it lit.
Sure. We can certainly take that into account.
I think Noel, just by having the parking lot lit, you know, we're gonna get some residual light out to the walkway. And then what I've also learned in this process is any, I would've gone into it thinking that, you know, there's a partnership in terms of, you know, what we're paid for. Anything that we do to change, you know, the thoroughfare based upon the project, we will be on responsibility for payment. So we certainly can add additional light if we want it along that way because, you know, we will be responsible for paying it anyway. So as we finalize the site plan and look at it going that way, I think you'll get some residual, you're gonna, it's obviously gonna be far better lit because, you know, when those new lights, you know, it's pretty bright for a ways. But if we look and determine that there might be some other areas that we want to add light, that's something that we can look at. And it's an advantage of having our own in-house master electrician, you know, who can take a look at that and help us with it.
Other things, I'll take your question just a second. Other things we're reviewing right now, getting to the level of detail with Jim about like snow removal and width of sidewalks and where he wants to use a snow pad. And so we're starting to get into that level of detail on the site just about now, yes?
So I know we had talked back at the, I don't know what our groups were called, the design, the early groups, about the site and that we were gonna reclaim the space up at the top. That playground is gonna be green space, and that's still the plan?
Yep.
And then I wondered about the original building, the loop, is that gonna stay as a sort of a loophole or will that be?
You mean for the, in front of the existing building? Yeah, the current plan is that, and it will be, we've talked about reversing the traffic back to the way it originally was because if you remember, we reversed the traffic a few years ago to increase the stacking space within that. But early childhood will be very different, you know, in terms of there isn't the kind of drop off that there is. It's mostly people parking. We've actually even discussed today, do we actually put the parking in that along the actual building itself? You know, so rather than having it on the other side of the driveway, do we restripe it? So the parking is right along the building, considering a lot of early childhood families may, you know, wanna park right next to the building, get out and walk in. So we do plan to keep that loop. There was some, as we continue to work through the site plan with the city, there were some additional ideas or requests, I should say, for the district to consider that we'll be looking at in terms of just how that, is that the western part of the?
Yep.
Yep, would actually operate. So we continue to work through some of those details with the city, but we anticipate the loop staying there. We would possibly put the vehicles right next to the building and angle parking there so that there's less of a distance for those parents bringing multiple kids into the early childhood center to walk.
Yeah, a lot of discussion was had today about where to locate a new curb cut to both maximize parent queuing space, because obviously you have a lot of parents wanting to drop off at this site, while also not having too many in quick succession that could be confusing to people who it's their first time coming to the building. So trying to balance that of, so this in its current location maximizes the amount of stacking space to the front door, which is typically where the drop off line likes to stop. So we're working to balance that with the city. Yeah.
In the design development diagram, there's a couple little just interesting nooks in the breakout rooms. And I'm just wondering if they have any specific plan? They're just kinda like almost triangles.
These right here?
Yeah, those, what are those for?
Perfect. So one of the, I'll call it a tenant of the core planning group was to allow for future flexibility, including the potential of like a swing classroom for a bubble year. So it was important that this classroom be able to be utilized if so needed for kindergarten and this classroom if so needed for first grade and vice versa. So there's a door at the back of this classroom and the back of this classroom so that it could relate to the other resource area if needed. So it, I'll say until you need that, it functions as almost like a small bounded by three walls conference room. So that's what, in the user groups, we talked about, having maybe a small table there. And then there's a marker board on this wall. I'm not very accurate.
So that one, though, doesn't open onto?
That one in particular opens into the EBD room, yep. But, so it'll function as a kind of a nook for smaller conversations or quieter conversations while also serving that larger need of being able to bounce between years if needed.
So there won't be any doors on them?
So there's a door on the classroom, but this room is not bounded by a door, no. So it's enclosure is really made by three walls and then it'll be open on the fourth wall. We actually talked for a little while about closing it off. The teachers thought it had maximum utilization being open if they wanna do a big activity. So these breakout areas are proposed to be, I don't know if it's maybe almost 50/50 hard surface flooring to carpet to provide a variety of options for activities. So they could go out and do a little messier activity on the hard surface portion, which is on this half. And then it transitions to carpet back here for quieter activities.
Are all the classrooms the same size?
All the, I'll say all of the K5 classrooms are the same size. There's certainly a variety of classrooms sizes when it comes to the specialists and the support services, but yes.
And then I just wanted to sort of repeat what Tom was saying about overhang, where I think there's value to having a larger overhang, just, you know, so more people can be standing under it if it's raining and waiting for the cars to come pick them up or, you know, what. And it seems like a four and a half foot overhang is not very much above the door. And I didn't know if the other doors where people might be coming out, like through the cafeteria or the other sides, if they had any overhangs and whether you had thought of adding any overhangs there?
Sure, I think this tree wants to be perfectly in my view here. There is an overhang here at what's the bus entry, but I'll say they're all pretty much the same depth right now. They're shown at about four and a half feet. So we can certainly review that with the facilities team.
Right, and I don't know what the reasons were for your choosing that depth, so you might have solid reasons for that. But it just seems like it's nice to have a larger gathering space underneath an overhang.
Sure. Yeah, we can certainly explore that. Yes?
Just thinking about the classroom pods. At the Northfield Middle School, the different hallways are named for different creeks, like Spring Creek and Heath Creek or whatever. And I'm just wondering if there would be, has there been discussion about the pods having their own distinct characteristic? You know, a different name or a different, you know, to personalize them for it?
That's a great question that I might have to throw to Dr. Hillman. Because I haven't heard of anything, but it's certainly possible.
We have not discussed that yet because what we think is it's going to be, it's gonna have very creative names like the first grade breakout area and the second grade breakout area because having those singular grade levels will really make that, you know, their home. Now, we're planning to do some similar kinds of materials, you know, in those areas. You know, however, we, there are some, have been some talk about some different kinds of materials depending on the grade level. So I think that we will have that personalization, or personalization isn't the right word, but customization on an as-needed basis. But I think the key thing is that at the middle school, you know, even though there's predominantly one grade level on one wing, there's always other things there. In this case, each of these pods will be a grade level pod. And so my sense is that no matter what we call it, they will call it, go to fifth grade, you know, the fifth grade breakout section.
And there'd be a lot of ways to bring that in, whether we use color differently or even maybe in the color of the furniture. So maybe the building structure is more, you know, homogeneous or equivalent, but you could have different, you know, colors of chairs or things like that. So I think that's a whole conversation we could have.
And I think that's a really great point that Sal makes is that, you know, we have not selected any furniture yet. In fact, we're gonna run a very similar process this fall to create some district-wide standards for furniture. And so what we're going to do is have a core planning group, just like we did for all of these, you know, projects so far to talk specifically about furniture. What are the kinds of rules we'd like to have for selecting furniture? Our goal is to create a kit of parts that across the school system that you could pick from to create some consistency in our furniture. But also, when you think about customizing for a grade level, the furniture for kindergarten will obviously look very different than the furniture that we select for fifth grade. So I think that's another way that you will be able to customize those areas. And that's gonna be a very exciting process that we get into in the fall.
Absolutely.
I have another question.
Yeah?
When Carlton built the White Center, there was a lot of, I mean, it is a building that was the middle school and now it's a new building with a lot of glass on it. And they insist that they had to have the lights on in there all the time for like 24 hours a day for security purposes. So there's a lot of light pollution from that building. Now, there's a lot more glass on this than the current Greenville. And I don't know if the same security concerns apply of having lights on 24/7. But, I mean, is there gonna be any concern for nighttime light pollution? Because that's also something the city's environmental quality commission has been concerned a lot about.
Sure. So some of that would be district operational choice. I'll say most districts I work with wanna have some level of light just because otherwise you can't capture anything on video camera. So no point in having cameras if there's no light to capture it. But if you have eight lights in the classroom or maybe nine, you know, it might be one. Or maybe all the classroom lights are off and it's just hallways and lights only come on with motion sensors. So there's a lot of things we can do with new building controls that it's not an, I'll call it an all or nothing. Or I certainly wouldn't expect in places like the cafeteria, the media center, where you have significant amounts of glass that you'd want all lights on all the time. Even from an energy bill perspective, it'll be LED, but still not money well spent. I don't know if you have?
Yeah, I raised my eyebrows a little bit at that too because I think there's different functionality too. I think that when you think about some of the college facilities, you know, they are used for a greater duration or number of hours than our facilities are. And if you go through our buildings at night right now, we typically use only the emergency lights in the building. And then in the places that are newer, the motion detector pieces do come into play. So I agree with what Sal said and the fact that I think there's a different purpose to this building. There are some times where I know students are, you know, for example, in the White Center quite late, you know, for a variety of purposes. And that may be very appropriate when your market is 18 to 22-year-olds. You know, but for our purposes, we typically have had those emergency lights only. And then, you know, we are continuing to look at how can we use automation and technology to make the energy of the efficiency of the building the best it can be while also providing some of that security piece. I would not anticipate us using the lights in that manner. Certainly respect other organizations and what their needs are. Ours is a little bit different because we do lock the whole place down. And, you know, all of our buildings also are tied directly into, there's a call to police with our security systems if there is a sense that there's a break-in or there's a motion detector inside the building that went off. The police will come. I know this because they called me up until about a year ago. They kept calling me to tell me when it was, sometimes it would be the wind that would jostle a door or there were some things, so the system is pretty sensitive. So I don't think we have the same level of need for that kind of secure lighting that college might have.
Great question. The building will have both, so occupancy sensors for lights, but also we're required to incorporate daylighting sensors so that the windows nearest, or the lights nearest the windows actually dim in response to the daylight that's coming in to conserve energy. Yeah.
Having just gone through a new science building at Carlton, you're at a point now where you're going to do the construction documents? Are there, is there a chance for them to be reviewed by the people on the core committees?
The construction documents?
Yeah, to see if things are actually ending up where more eyes on them? Again, having just gone through this and finding out that things aren't where you thought they were, is there a way for any review in that perspective?
Sure, so there's a couple processes already set up and obviously you can always add more. So when we distributed the final user group book on Friday, we told Sam to send that out to anybody who came to a meeting. And then now is the time to let us know if they say, no, I meant that on that wall, not that wall. So that process is under review. And then we did this with Bridgewater as well and we are doing it for New Greenville to sit down for basically a whole day with Jim and his team to talk about expectations, especially for maintenance on, you know, outlets down the hallway for cleaning and, you know, where they want mop sinks and all that kind of operational reviews that it works well. So there's a couple processes in place. I don't think we have a core group meeting set up, though, so.
No, I think typically the core groups, the core group was to get the big bubbles, you know, in those spots. And then the user groups saw each of these of the designs of their areas at least twice and in some cases, three times. And so I think that looking at the very detailed level of the documents, I think that that has already been done, probably more so than in some other places. And then in addition, as Sal said, Val and Sal, Sal said, you know, people have an opportunity to take a look at it again, you know, it'll be emailed out to them.
And I should've mentioned, I was not at the meeting, but we also went to their all-staff meeting last Wednesday and gave a similar presentation without some of the fun renderings because the Friday meeting hadn't happened, but.
And I think that that's important too. In fact, I just was, I did a tour of buildings today with the Northfield News new associate at our, Sam Olmos, and we happened to run into one of the members of the core planning team from Greenville Park. And on request, she really just gave world a tremendous amount of credit in terms of the amount of engagement that they had with the users and how she explained how she felt very much listened to, that every time, you know, when there was feedback provided, the document came back just a little bit tweaked based upon, you know, what the suggestions were. And there was honesty in that, yep, if we do that, then we have to do something different over here. And so this person participated in the core planning, was part of a grade level team, you know, that looked at the user group process. And so also, I think that we've just, we got that feedback that people have felt like they really have had a say in the process and that they feel that their voice has been heard by the architecture world. And what more do you want than that? That's a ringing endorsement. So we thank them for that. So I think that there's a number of things, you know. Now, what we also learned, I think just to be very transparent, when you move from the core, when you move from what you're talking about in a campaign, an informational campaign, to a core planning process where it's big bubbles and then we get to the user groups, we had some meetings where people were like, oh my goodness, this is real and you're actually gonna put a marker board on that wall. And that spawned a whole new level of conversation. Do I want the eight-foot marker board or do I wanna have four-foot marker board and four-foot tack board? Where should, you know? So I think that people really, it did hit them at that point, that, oh my goodness, you know, this is where I'm going to work, you know, moving forward. So I think there was a lot of input and a lot of feedback to try to get it right like you're saying, Tom.
And a lot of stuff changed a significant amount, I'll call it, between user group meeting one and two, in a good way, right? People moved across the building or programs flipped floors or, but that's all good, that's part of the process.
Absolutely.
Do all the classrooms of the same grade level look the same? So they're all gonna have the same sized marker boards and all that?
Sure.
And then the other question I have is, do all the kindergarten rooms have outside exits?
I'll answer both questions. So I'll say all of the rooms have the same kit of parts, but they're kind of perfect mirrors from each other. So they both have their door entries right here. And then the user groups helped us set up rules like on the wall that's closest to the door entry, we want things like mailboxes and cubbies and so, and then the opposite wall was the teaching wall. So while the north wall of every room might not always be the same, it's the same kit of parts, maybe mirrored or rotated. So we did talk about grade level consistency. We actually met with a couple grades at a time, so grades four and five met together. Some of the primary grades met together, so yes. So, and I'll say even like first grade and second grade might've chosen very, very slightly different cabinetry design or how big of a marker board or tack board, but all of the rooms within a grade level were consistent. And each kindergarten room does not have a direct exit because it's not required by code. So we're trying to minimize number of direct exits as possible for security. So there is a fire code required door at the end of every classroom pod off of the classroom tower because you need two exits out at any time, but we don't have them direct from classrooms.
Great, I had heard otherwise, so I'm glad to know now that it isn't, okay.
Yeah, I think the fewer number of doors, the better for management and propping of doors and security and all of that, so. Good questions. I feel like I missed a hand over here, yes?
I seem to have parking lots on my mind right now. Can you flash back to them?
Sure.
Where it says parking, 78 spaces. We have some assurance that that's not gonna be a drop off point?
That's a good, great, great question. Assurance that it's not gonna be a drop off point for parents for New Greenville? I think what we need to do is make the main drop off point where we're trying to encourage people as convenient as possible and have as maximum queuing space to avoid those kind of behaviors. That being said, I'm certain it's happening today that parents have deals with their kids of meet me across the street or meet me in the other lot. So we sometimes joke that you can train the bus drivers, but you can't train the parents. So I'm sure some creativity might happen.
There's an open space and you've got direct access to the main entrance.
Here?
Yes.
Got it. Yeah, I guess I'll say that I think these parking stalls have come south a little bit since this drawing was done. And obviously, we can do our best with signage of, you know, no parent drop off buses only. But some creativity might be exercised.
It appears you might be able to move that diagonal sidewalk south a little bit.
Yeah.
And widen the other sidewalk.
Sure. I think that would work. And another change that we're working on with the city is. And another change that we're working on with the city is the building right now is shown on this diagram, kind of at an angle to match the creek in the back. More and more, we're finding that actually making a building rectilinear creates more usable green space in the back. So right now, we have a little bit of green space in the back and a little bit in the front. We're trying to pool some of that to one more usable space, so that was some feedback we got from them.
Thank you for your presentation and for answering my questions.
Of course.
We got more to go yet.
I have a little bit more to scoot through.
That's got all in the...
Pretty much used up.
I'll say the site plan has been, it changes every day, and it's been a topic of much debate over the past couple of months as we work through what everybody's forecasting traffic might look like with these programs all being on the same site when they're not currently. So that was the intent of the traffic study and all of the ongoing conversations. Any other questions about the outside before I show just a couple interior views and then get into Sibley? Because believe it or not, we've got a whole other project to talk about. Okay, so when it comes to interior materials, these are maybe a couple steps back in development from the exterior, but we're starting to work through some materiality. We did bring some physical samples to our meeting on Friday and got some feedback on a couple of them from that group, and so we need to have another meeting. But really, taking the core group's charge of being inspired by nature and feeling very of Northfield inspired our interior design team, so they took some pictures from around, especially the wildflower areas that are seen around some of the colleges here, and taking inspiration, so pulling out from both lichen, prairie flowers, and pebbles, some qualities of those features that we can apply to the building. So a blending of textures or using texture as a key element, seeing that maybe the bulk of some of these photos shows a lot of green and blue and some of those timeless colors, but also still having some pops of that natural vibrance, and then the timeless materiality that stone has in its variation or subtle variation in color. So here is an interior view of the cafeteria. I'll orient you a little bit. So those windows we saw in the exterior, and then the doors to the outside are here, and this is that, one half of that large window to the exterior. And then the servery is right behind us, and then the front door is down this hallway right here, and the gym is also just to our left. So showing some layering in the ceiling and some application of some feature ceilings. This is the feature wall that the core group and the user groups wanted to use as a display wall, so this would be a gathering space for the whole school, so really creating it as a focal point. And then a subtle use of a variety of warm natural materials on both the walls and the floor. And in all views, I should have started with using color in a way that is easy to change. So in things that are incredibly permanent, trying to use more timeless or neutral materials, and then in things that are easier to change, things like paint, or you know you're going to do flooring again sometime, trying to use color in that way because we can be as timeless as we want with color, but obviously trends change. So that was a challenge that both the core group and the district has given us. And then I think we've got one more. So here is an interior view of the media center, so the wall to the outside is behind us. I'll point out a couple features that you might be able to see on the plan. So the media teaching space, or a dedicated space for media teaching to happen, is behind this door right here, right next to a reading nook, so a quiet area where reading can happen in a more meaningful way, but also supervisable from the media desk, a space to house the collection. So I've been working with your media specialist on the collection size and having mobile shelving. And then this right here shows the operable wall between the, part of the media center that wants to be able to be secured at night to protect your investment, while during the day being able to flow and be more open into that media living space. And then another feature you can see here are the two windows to the flex labs right above the media center. So importance for them to both gather daylight from the windows that seek into the media center, as well as that relationship that the media center really has to maker space and some of those activities. Any other questions? Yes?
For the cafeteria and probably to the gym for the summer, but acoustically, how are you managing to dampen the sound or...
Absolutely. So first and foremost, what you see here is an acoustical ceiling tile in many layers, so trying to make sure you have as many soft surfaces as possible. Usually, you don't want the floor in a cafeteria to be a soft surface, so we have to take advantage of walls and ceiling. So sometimes you see hard-lid ceilings or a very, very tall space without an acoustic ceiling, which leads to a lot of echo. Round spaces can be challenging for that too, because the sound all leads to the middle again. So we're working through that by having a series of acoustic ceilings. These wood ceilings are actually an acoustic element as well. And then on the wall that is kind of just out of you that we can't see, showing some acoustic paneling high on the wall as well. And then in the gym, planning for acoustic panels, so I'm going to scoop back to the exterior view. So along the south wall of the gym is where the operable wall will stack, and then the north wall of the gym is where we have some of our windows. So that means that on the east and west walls and some of the south walls where we can have really some acoustic paneling, and also planning for a big projector, a big projector screen too. So trying to provide some of those. And then last but not least, the gym will have what's called an acoustic deck, so it's a metal deck that has little perforations in it to capture sound.
Good.
Of course.
And I have another question.
She's up again.
I just noticed from some of your diagrams that the lighting looks slanted, which I think is cool if you meant it that way, so I'm asking you if that's intentional or...
Like in this view, like it looks slanted like this?
No, no, not like that, but that they're not all lined up in a row, your, it's not fluorescent light, but your LEDs or whatever, they look like they're a little off-kilter and more interesting instead of all perfectly straight and...
Sure.
Is that true?
Yes. So in a couple spaces, so the resource areas outside the classrooms, the media center and the cafeteria, we're showing a series of layered ceilings that are just very slightly off from each other, taking inspiration from some of the layering that happens in a field or layering that happens with stone. So nature is very rarely perfectly rectangular and perfectly flat, so it does add some cost, so we're not doing that in every space, but really calling attention to some key feature spaces with slight height differences as well as grid orientation, so yes.
Cool, I like it.
Good, I'm glad. Any other questions before I give a quick update on Sibley? Oh, I have one more slide that I forgot about. So we've been in design since about mid-January, and like I said, we've committed to issuing documents for contractors to start looking at in the end of the second week of July. And then they will have just under a month to review those documents, and we're at this time tentatively planning the first week in August for receiving bids. I think Thursday, August 1st is our current bookmarked date. And then construction will start immediately after award. On a parallel timeline, we'll be seeking a building permit from the state. And as Dr. Hillman mentioned, in the fall, we'll also start, kind of start with the furniture planning process. So that's kind of what the next maybe 45 to 60 days look like. So for Sibley, so to remind everybody of the referendum scope at Sibley, there's a renovation to the media center and current cafeteria, an addition for music and kitchen cafeteria and receiving. So the referendum diagram to jog some memories showed an addition next to the current music room for more music space, renovation inside the current media center and the current cafeteria, and then a kitchen cafeteria receiving addition on this side of the building. Again, we used the core planning group process to help land the layout of the addition and the relationships within and the renovation as well. So the Sibley Core Planning Group, again, I've got our names of our participants listed here. They met three times, tried to get their feedback in before they leave for the summer. So we met on, three times, once a week, sometimes five days apart, on April 25th, May 2nd, and May 7th, and they again developed guiding principles and criteria. So these are new, and there's only a couple pages of them, so I think I'll go through them real quickly, so. And we, whenever possible, tried to evoke consistency across the building, so we're having a lot of similar conversations about the use of kitchen cafeterias, the role of the media center in the future, how specialist spaces should be used. So anytime it was appropriate, we would say, "Well, at this building, we talked about this," and try to make sure you have some consistency. So you'll see some common themes. So the building needs to meet the needs of today while providing for future flexibility. Building should be safe and secure while being warm and welcoming for all who come to the building. The building addition and renovation should provide opportunities for natural daylight. The design should support before and after-school functions, and that may include the flex lab, the art, music, classrooms, the gym, and the cafeteria. The media center should serve as the heart of the building while being separate from circulation. The design should be inspiring to students and have a signature space that expresses Sibley pride. The design should support ease of building transitions to specialists and to lunch, things like that. The design should support a variety of small group spaces that are accessible and centrally located, and the design should support universal accessibility. That was very important to the core group with the programming you have at that building. So those are more of the philosophical statements about the design, and then these are design criteria about adjacencies and maybe activities that need to be supported. So cafeteria should be flexible, supporting performance and learning, and we need to accommodate 220 students per lunch period. Specialist spaces such as the gym and music should be adjacent to each other for scheduling and acoustic reasons. The new music room should be located near the existing music room, and it should be accessible before and after school, mostly for lessons. There should be acoustic control, especially in the cafeteria and music. The media center should function as a student space, and we'll have an adjacent small group or spaces, a separate storage room, and a media teaching space. Right now, all those things really happen all in one space. The flex lab and media center should be next to one another. That's a common thread with New Greenville. The additional sped classrooms talked about in the referendum should be close to the existing sped classrooms if not adjacent, and they need to provide adequate storage. The sped classroom should support small group activities and confidential conversations. The speech and ESL spaces should accommodate small group activities and be acoustically separate from loud spaces. And the building should support safe exiting and bus flow for students. So I'll get to a building diagram in just a minute, but one major change that came about throughout the core planning group process was the idea of building the addition all in one spot on-site instead of in two separate spots. I think that had multiple benefits, both from, there's going to be some challenge in getting a truck to the receiving area of this part of the site as it's quite steep, as well as they had criteria about having things like the gym and the cafeteria and the music room all together for before and after-school function, and that's really challenging when those things are on opposite ends of the building. So all of these functions really wanted to be together, and the site could support it. So right now, we are showing all of the addition being just south of the current gym and kind of wrapping around it on either side. That also has the added benefit of being able to connect to what is currently a completely separate mechanical building. So the mechanical room has been separate from the building since the building was built, so staff have to leave the building every time they want to go out there, so we're hoping to provide an interior access. So I'll quickly go over the schematic design diagram. The existing building is all shown in gray here, and then any areas receiving work have a color assigned to them. So the main part of the renovation is in the building here, which is where the current media center and kitchen and cafeteria are. So you can see the media functions are shown in the center here in blue. There's a storage room and a couple of small group spaces, as well as a media teaching space, which is not something they have presently. It kind of happens in the middle of the room right now. There's some student services for social worker and school psych that will be accessible off of the main office right here. We're working to remedy some accessibility issues you have in the nurse area there, so the bathroom is not currently accessible there, and there's no space for a nurse to have a private conversation. Her desk is kind of right in the middle of the cot space, so some small expansion in the nurse's office to meet both of those needs, which moves the main building conference room south just a little bit. And then last but not least, the addition of a flex lab, so very similar to what's proposed at Greenville Park to support maker space activities, might be used for before and after-school programming and having a relationship with the media center here. So then, so that's all with renovation. So then if we get to the addition, just to orient people, this is the gym. There's doors out on either side of the gym right now. That existing exterior mechanical building is here, and then the current music room is here. So again, following their criteria of having the new music room right next to the existing music room, and this room being accessible before and after school, and then to have our efficiency for staffing and to support programming, to have the current art room actually be used as a special education room, and then build an art room so you can have all your specialists on one side of the building. So that's shown there as a music and art room. And then we get to the kitchen cafeteria. So in dark purple is the kitchen, and the cafeteria for 220 students is in lighter purple. I think this will also have a benefit of being well utilized for your before and after-school programming and having a door directly to that space for coming and going, also providing some storage for them and their space that's currently kind of in the hallway out here. And then last but not least, supporting building receiving, and then again, a connection to that existing mechanical space. Another benefit of having the addition here is you can get to it from both hallways. So instead of the cafeteria being at the end of one hallway and people walking past classrooms all day, that there's ability to have kind of an indoor and an outdoor and to have some flow there. So that's where the core group landed, and we are, I'll call it midway through the user group process for Sibley. So we've met with all groups one time to date. We met with them between the 28th and the 31st, and then we tried to squeak in a second round last week, and it turns out they're busy the last week of school. So we actually have them scheduled for this Thursday, the 13th is our follow-up with all of those groups. So we're starting to get into the detail level of planning for how many students and where glasses and cabinetry. So here's an update or a zoomed-in view of that media center space, so the media teaching, the student services, so four spaces for a desk and small group conversations, space to support the media collection, and also some of that breakout space, some storage and the flex lab, and then those renovations to the office. So planning really a dedicated and discreet cot area, an office, and then a accessible And then for the addition here, just zooming into the music and art classroom, cafeteria starting to talk about table layout, some bathrooms, and then really figuring out what needs to go into the storage rooms. So like I said, we've got user groups round two scheduled for this Thursday from a bigger picture. We're planning to issue those construction documents in late fall, with construction being finished at the end of summer 2020. Ideally, some construction activity starting this year yet in 2019. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the process or the design. Bless you, Noel.
Excellent, excellent overview. This is really exciting. So I think we asked questions along the way, which is a great process.
I mean...
All really great questions, so thank you, everyone, for those great questions. But however, are there any final questions or comments?
I was on the committee, so I don't have any questions.
Okay. Come, yeah.
Just one quick question. So the renovations, when will those occur? Is it supposed to be during the school, not during the school year or...
Those will have to start right after school finishes and then be completed over the summer. So we'll really want, especially, I mean, I'm sure nobody wants to not have a space, but especially the kitchen needs to remain operational until school finishes. But the intent would be that we can start the addition maybe in late 2019 and then build that through the school year while maintaining exiting, so you can get a new kitchen online before we tear into your old one, so. Good question.
Any other final questions?
We just need to publicly thank Sal Banger and Sal and her team, Caitlin Chambers, and the whole crew of other people who have come through have just been incredibly professional. They know what they're doing. They are incredibly great listeners and are able to not just hear what people are saying, but what people are meaning, and then miraculously turn that into a drawing.
Appreciate that.
You know, it's incredible. The communication has been excellent, and again, I think people have felt that the process has been authentic. So, you know, to Sal and Caitlin and your team, we are just so grateful for the work that you've done for us.
Thank you. It's been a great collaboration.
All right, long day for you, so thank you, Sal.
No, no problem. Thank you for accommodating me.
Okay, so, excellent. So we worked our way through the agenda. To remind board members, we are on items for information construction update number eight. Dr. Hillman?
I'm currently finding it in the packet here, forgive me, but I think we've had quite a bit of construction updates.
Yes.
The one piece that I will just add, without going back to my notes, is that, you know, we have bid Bridgewater, and the bids came in slightly under, which is a good thing. There's a couple of bid packages that were not bid on, as you heard with the last one, but they are working through that as part of the process. And I have been told you will probably see some construction fence... probably see some construction fence later this week. So you will start to see some of that. We're still waiting for some final approval from the state on the plan, but there's some things that they are going to get going this week in anticipation of getting that project started. So that is really where we're at. That's really the Bridgewater update and again, I think we got a great update on both Sibley and Greenville Park from Sal.
Ellen? So I just have one question that's more at the uber level. As we start to think about these things, and it's so exciting, getting to this point, in terms of Jim calls up from the facilities team, it just, I think about the Bridgewater roof and how much time intensive that was for Jim and his team and we're going to have a lot of plates spinning. I mean, is there, is, does Jim sort of have a plan for how this is going to get managed?
So I think that that's one of the key reasons we hired a construction manager firm. So Josh Cooper had emailed me before the meeting and saying he wasn't unfortunately able to make it tonight. But basically, we have now transitioned from only seeing Wold to where now we see Wold and Knutson pretty often. So Josh will be really the person who will be managing all of those projects for us along with others from Knutson. So for example, last week, we just held a contractor kickoff meeting. Josh Cooper, while Jim was there, Josh Cooper ran that meeting. And so you're going to really see Josh doing some of that project management kinds of things that you would typically see Jim do within the district. It's not that Jim won't be involved, but that's why we're paying Knutson, uh, construction manager to handle that.
Great question, thank you. Any other final questions on construction update? Okay. So we can now review future meetings. So as everyone knows, we only have one board meeting in June, so it will actually be Monday, July 8th before we reconvene for a regular school board meeting. Then there is just one meeting in July to where then we would meet on Monday, August 12th and Monday, August 26th. All of those meetings are at 7:00 PM in the high school media center. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Move by Noel, is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.